My name is Danielle Taylor, D A N Y E L L E T A Y L O R. I'm the administrative assistant to the technology director. You may have seen my name in tonight's board packet. I've turned my resignation in effective this Friday, July 29th, 2022. You have asked several times during these public meetings why district staff have resigned. I cannot speak for anyone but myself, that is why I'm here tonight. Let me say, let me start by saying I am not here to campaign for your recall, nor am I here to defend the district. I simply want to give you an understanding of what led me to make the difficult decision to end my employment with the district after almost 12 years. I did not accept this position in the district for recognition or kudos. I have a passion for helping others and I wanted to make an impact on our students' education, no matter how small. Money is not the issue. For the most part, I believe I'm appropriately compensated. Right now, I am burnt out, and I have been for a while. Because of the changes made to my department, I have had very opportu- very few opportunities to use my leave. I'm currently leaving behind, I'm currently leaving over 100 hours of unused. I have stuck with this district through a lot. Two superintendents, three technology directors, levies, bonds, a pandemic, construction of a brand-new school, and the remodel of three others. The problem is, no matter how much I tell myself it will get better, it has yet to. I tried hard to find a reason to stay. I can no longer handle the immense workload and unreasonable stresses this job has placed upon me. When I first started, technology was used, but not to the extent that it is today. Technology in the past few years has boomed, while our department has not. Not only have the devices changed and grown in quantity, but technology is so ingrained into every aspect of education, there are very few places technology does not reach. Testing, curriculum, classrooms, and state requirements, along with traditional maintenance tasks like lighting, heating and cooling, security, and so much more, all have technology aspects to them, but our department headcount has not kept pace. Our little technology department handles not only the district's physical devices, but programs, software, troubleshooting for much of the community, all data in the district, and board meetings that are unprofessional and have lasted several times longer than should be appropriate. That is a lot for just three people. I understand that we are in a budgetary crisis, but we are not as overstaffed as you have been led to believe. To further my point, it is my understanding that the district has delayed the process of hiring a temporary computer technician. Our technology director spent a lot of time writing a grant that would pay for an extra person in our department for a year. We were all extremely excited when we heard her grant was approved. I'm disappointed that, after all her hard work, this attempt to lighten the workload of this department has been postponed as long as it has. While the job has now been posted, it will take time for the applications to come in, time for the scheduling and conducting of interviews, and time for the hiring process to begin. We don't have time to wait for hell. I just ask that you, school board members and leaders of this district, take a step back and understand how our department and every department in the district really functions, learn what the rules are, and make a change to both your motivation and mindset before the cycle of burnout and resignation is repeated. Thank you.
Rachel Mercer.
I'll just stand, because I'm old now. Hi, I'm Rachel Mercer, R A C H E L M E R C E R. I'm speaking tonight to address comments made during the last regular board meeting by President Howe and Board Member Douglas. But would like to direct the board, the comments I'm making to the board in general. This is not the first time these specific discriminatory comments have been made. I would like to point out to the board that whether or not this is your intention, the message you're sending is unless staff, youth, or other community members conform to a very specific standard that you deem appropriate, they are not welcome in Prosser. This is not only heartbreaking, but dangerous. It also counter to what I assume the majority of Prosser residents want for our kids. We want Prosser School District children to feel welcome, to feel safe, and to be proud of being from Prosser. I look forward to official apology from the board.
Next one's just him. You're not wanting to come up? All right.
As most of you know, I taught 45 years, the first of 1968 to 1976. I taught in this school district. I was chairman of the English Department for most of that. Wrestling coach, assistant football coach, off and on. I feel like I have engaged and benefited a lot of my students, some of whom sit before me. Some of you have been my colleagues. I've carried a couple of you around in diapers. My concern with the pace and movement of this board is great and unyielding. I would like to see you do well. I would like each of you to rise to the occasion. That would be my bottom wish. Even though my family has fought in many wars, sometimes against each other, and I am capable in combat, I don't want to see you dead on the ground bleeding. Contrary to belief, I would like to see you all be successful, be the best of yourselves, and get us through this cussed thing. But there are some things you must consider. Among those things, what is your legacy going to be? When people five years from now, 10 years, 20 years from now, look back upon you and your actions, what will they say? Concerning a budget crisis, I have suggested before that you sell the land on Buonaventure, on Messina, and Overland Empire Highway. Divest yourselves of that piece of rock and grass. I don't think it will ever perk. I don't think you can build a school out there. It is basically, though, money in the bank for you. You are not yet at budget crisis until that has been divested from the ownership of this district. You are not yet at critical mass. You have not reached burn stage nor explosion. But you are close.
Miguel Simmons.
Mickey Simmons. Or Miguel. It's Miguel, yeah.
I knew that wasn't Mickey.
Hello, everyone. My name is Miguel Simmons, or you could just write Miguel, M I G U B L, last name, or O R R. I'm here tonight to address the comments made in the previous meeting by Board President Andy Howe and Board Member Douglas. They said they wouldn't approve funding for the Boys and Girls Club. It was renamed and mentioned their pronouns in reference to binary people usually who use pronouns. They expressed disapproval with a potential name change, which, to my understanding, is not on the table. It seems like something that they're possibly predicting. And I would like to note on the website, it comes tonight, Prosser School District does not discriminate on the basis of sex, race, creed, religion, color, national origin, age, veteran or military status, sexual orientation, gender expression, and/or identity, disability, et cetera. And my understanding is there are a few non-binary students at the high school, and they are a minority, and they deserve access to new resources such as after-school programs like everybody else. It is disturbing to me that the board would consider rebuilding funding based simply on that identity. Now, I do not believe with the board's obvious opinions about non-binary people and possibly trans people as a whole. However, it is disturbing to me that this discriminatory belief about binary people would lead to cutting of funding for an institution as valuable as the Boys and Girls Club, which serves many, many people besides that minority. Thank you.
Thank you next.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The blood pounding in my ears kept me from hearing. So my name is Nikki Simmons. M I K K I, last name S Y M O N D S. I'm also here to think about comments about the Boys and Girls Club. I was on the board of the Boys and Girls Club for over 10 years, and I don't, I might need some help, Brian, but, you know, the incidence of crime went down, I believe, over 20% since we have had the Boys and Girls Club. At least 21%, possibly more. It is of great value to the community, and I, I think it may be even a rumor that the Boys and Girls Club is going to change their name. It's baffling to me that something that is so valuable to our community, protecting property, protecting individuals, giving students a place to be when they need a place to be. A lot of families who use the club don't necessarily need to be there. But a lot of them, their parents work two jobs. Not just, I don't mean both parents, I mean both parents who might work two jobs to make ends meet. To take this valuable resource away from those families, from those children, is not serving the entire community. And I have one question for each board member. It would be great if you answered, especially right now. But what do you see your position as? What is your purpose as a board member? Who do you serve?
So before we go any further, I just want to get this out there. Peggy was sitting next to me that night. I heard exactly what was said, and Peggy said nothing. I said it all. So any venom that's going towards Peggy is completely misplaced, just so everybody is aware of it. Thank you very much for the comment. We're going to move on to consent items, revised. Do I have a motion to approve them?
I make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
What did we add? Okay, nothing was walked on?
No, not since the last email. We, there was the one.
Risk mention.
Yeah, yeah, that was all added on the.
We were revised as a certificated personnel.
All right, so I got a first from Peggy. Second from Jason. All in favor of consent items as presented? Please say aye.
I said aye.
Sounded like it. Okay, we are going to jump down to action items, which were revised, both via email and then at the start of the meeting. First on it would be the vouchers. Motion to approve the vouchers?
One second.
Okay, first and a second, are there any questions on the vouchers?
I have one this time. Thank you, Peggy, for responding quickly, and I'll just share real quick. My question was on 9:05, 8:15, creative products. It says STEM tables, so I just asked what those were and how many we got. It's like we got 28 for the CTE workstations. They're built for soldering and other electrical work, so they've come fully equipped for some of the CTE classes, so thank you.
I had a question on 9:05, 8:21. For her services from last August?
This is Jessica Wallace? Uh, no, that's, isn't that the parent training coming up?
No, she did the training we did last year for our teachers. We did for the, our parents in the, in July, in June.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we did that one in June.
Any further questions? All right, all in favor of approving the vouchers? Is it payroll on this one? I should have said it differently if there was. All right, approving the vouchers as presented, please say aye.
It's the end of the month, did we approve payroll already this month? So we'll approve it the following month.
Next, first meeting.
Next board. Okay, thank you. I can't give you a full and married number, I brought one with me, I don't know.
All right, so next on the list is the ASB fee increase. I love my screen goes, so I don't know who's going to talk about that.
Nirmal Joshi, first name, N I R N B L J O S H I. Can you do it without the mask? Sure.
It's his choice.
So, based on possible cuts in revenue for ASB after the passage of HB 1660 into 2020, which is now RCW 28A325010. We are looking at quite a substantial increase in ASB revenue because the law says that the school should have a secure place for those who qualify for free and reduced lunch, to waive ASB fees that include fees for events, equipment fees, prom tickets, things like that. So as more and more, and in Prosser High School, there's, I believe, about 68.6% of our students fall under that category. And although this was passed during the COVID year, and it's more and more people become aware of it, we feel that there will be an increase drop in ASB revenues. Next year's ASB officers approve an increase in fees for next year, and we're asking for board approval for that.
So that'd be both middle school and high school?
Just high school.
Just high school.
Well, that's a good thing. I mean, negative thing, but it's a good thing too, because that provides an opportunity for us to get more kids, to get families to complete that, the form to qualify for the, the free and reduced lunches, which then gets us to that place where we need to be, so that eventually we can get where all kids can eat for free, which is, I think that's been a goal for us for several years now. So, you know, it kind of hurts the ASB, but it's also a benefit for, ultimately a benefit for all kids, so.
What's the estimated revenue loss? Do you know offhand?
Offhand, from what I've heard, this is again when the bill was first passed, when our A D was talking with all the other A Ds in the district about it, and they were commenting and trying to get the legislature to reconsider it, because it was passed, taking into account the needs of most of those on the west side, but not really those rural businesses like ours. Conservative estimates would put it at 50% for five years.
Is that the largest part of the ASB budget?
It's directly, it's everything, yeah. So anything that should require ASB for, just doing some, I think, looking over last year's numbers, it was something like about 439 students obtained in ASB, and around 80 to 100 of them, we couldn't, and I don't precisely qualified for that. And that is based on just as we feel not everybody in the district knowing about it, but as word of mouth increases about it, we will see increased numbers. And so, since that applies to anything ASB, that's everything in our budget is expected to go down.
We had a high rate of return of those free reduced applications. We talked about that, I think, in January. Did we ever send those to the state for processing? What did we do with them? Because we had a huge.
So that they're actually entered here, we enter them into a database. But we have actually just recently qualified for community eligibility provision, which means all our students will be eating free, but it's for the next five years, breakfast and lunch. But parents still have to fill out the forms to qualify for the other services, so.
So we, this year we did a really good job of getting.
A great job, yes. Great job. They do a great job every year, but it's can be a challenge, especially with high school, because if there isn't, if they're going to leave campus to go eat, there's no really, they don't see the benefit of filling out a form that's kind of complicated. So this would be the benefit for them, for sure.
Can we make a less complicated form, or is it one we have to use?
Nope, you get the form, the form comes from the federal government, so, nope.
Just like filling out your taxes.
I also want to mention that we were just recently awarded a grant for $10,000 to offset some of that ASB revenue. So the ASB will get a check for that here at the end of the month. So that will, that will then benefit.
Is it, is it against the law for the district to, to make up the loss, or, I mean?
So, I mean, you'd probably have to look into the gift, the gift of funds, the gift of funds issue.
Like, so the law is, is that if a student doesn't have money, then where there was a requirement in order for students had to have an ASB in order to play, or even to get into games, you know, to be a spectator. So this removes all of that. And so even though we had talked about pay-to-play and some of these creative ways to make revenue, the state stepped in and said it's not equitable for students, and there is a different school experience for students who can afford to play versus students who can't, or even attend dances and things like that. So it's a, it's a move towards equity and equitable experience for students. It just makes it, you know, associate student bodies do have power and authority to raise money, and that's one of the main ways that they raise money, is through the ASB. But you can get creative and sell things. So there, there are other ways to sell funds, you just have to be able to market it and have the kids go out and sell.
One thing, Nirmal, that you can keep in mind is any student that's in foster care or is homeless or an unaccompanied youth, Title I can offset the cost of their ASB expenses. And we, we do, we have been doing that, the law changed, but that would just take a little bit of coordination. I mean, that would be noted in Skyward, but that would help a little bit. There's, I mean, it's not hundreds of kids, but it is some funding.
What's the actual dollar, though, would need to offset?
Because right now it's just an estimation, and our ASB secretary could really help you with that, Michael, with the numbers. But we've also kind of talked about maybe advertising more of installment plans, so students don't feel intimidated by the number when they see it, and think that they don't have to do anything, or they should avoid it because it's so big. But, yeah, we're looking at all possible avenues. When the bill first passed, I do remember our own, the ASB president at the time did say that this is a very giving community, but we fundraised the heck out of it. And so, because what had happened is when the bill was passed, and the A Ds asked the state, how should rural districts cope with it? They had one simple suggestion, fundraise, and that was the ASB president's responsibility, or fundraise to the Hill, how much more you expect to give.
Just one quick, so the, the fees that are offset, but it's, is it things like graduation, like caps and gowns? Senior t-shirt, well, but those would go through, I mean, so like a senior t-shirt, that would go through ASB. So was that also part of that? Or is it just fees, not necessarily objects you purchase?
I don't get, I'm not.
So if ASB sold senior, if say, oh, ASB sold senior t-shirts, everybody gets the senior, everybody can buy a senior t-shirt, t-shirt for $12 or whatever. Is that also part of this, or would it just be fees like dance? Okay, athletic fees, okay.
It would be the senior class that sells it, and those monies go into ASB.
Okay.
So the, the $10,000 that you mentioned that we got with the grant, was there stipulations with, with that money to help offset the, the extra money that non-qualified?
We'd already, excuse me, we'd already filed the required reporting to O S P I to show the need. And so we've already demonstrated the need for, for it, so.
But was there, what are the?
Oh, how it's used? No, it's just to offset.
So that money just automatically goes in, and so that can be, it's up to ASB to decide how that's going to offset.
It'll, it'll be separate from ASB. With ASB, the students have to approve it in tandem with the principal. And there are certain parameters. So, but for instance, in Prosser's case, we fund athletics or did fund athletics at about a million dollars a year, close to. So the ASB could pay for that completely. They would have to really have a big bake sale or something. Yeah, and so it's to offset some of those costs that the district will actually take over, recognizing that, you know, those are beneficial to kids.
Okay, I think, though, for that particular 10,000, that is, becomes ASB funds, right? It's but ASB could, I think, to your question, ASB could decide, okay, all this 10,000 is going to offset our ASB fees, or will the ASB, will they decide like, we're going to give, you know, 500 bucks to different, like to the prom committee, and then we're going to put some into fees and some into the prom committee and some into maybe some other bake. You could decide that, too.
Yeah, we could see like how much was shortcoming in each activity based on the waiver. We could then distribute it equitably among those organizations.
It is meant to benefit those kiddos that can't pay for, for the fees. So we need to demonstrate that it was used directly for those children.
Okay.
So the action requested tonight is to increase ASB fees from $45 to $50. I make a motion to follow the recommendation and increase the ASB fee from $45 to $50.
You say that ASB is basically the biggest club on campus.
It's, it's a, it's a full of many clubs.
Yeah, it manages all this. It's like it also operates, it's fun.
Yeah, it seems to me that that would be enough to offset one year, and you guys could choose to use it that way, and then not have to increase again after this.
I think the nice place, B, is runs between 150 and 200,000 dollars a year.
I would have to get the floor to look at the exact numbers, but.
It's a lot, it's. That's. That's not gonna be half. It might be half, it might be A S B fees, just A S B fees, but maybe not all their others.
So for instance, like I was just looking at how our expenses have gone up for a few years, so. Uh, we sell those A S B shirts, like whenever a student buys an A S B, they get one of those Mustang way shirts. And, uh. For instance, in two thousand eighteen, it cost us about two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. And in two thousand twenty-two, it cost us four thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So, yeah. Those prices are growing up.
Okay, anybody else got any questions? Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor of, uh, allowing A S B to raise the, the S B fee, fee, you say aye? Okay, so we pulled C, so we're down to D, which is first reading of policy twenty-four eleven. Everybody have a chance to go through it?
Should this be a discussion item and not an action item if it's our first reading?
I think we're gonna motion. To approve the first reading and move to second.
Good question.
I think that's how we've always done it, and then the, the third time it goes in front of us, we adopt policy.
Thank you.
So with that said, I'd entertain a motion to approve the first reading. That was Piggy?
I did, yeah.
Everybody have a chance to go through it? Some questions, concerns?
This is required by the state, in fact, that's what we said at the work session.
I believe so, yeah. In fact, if I remember, it's a Wazda copy, isn't it? Is that a sneezer question? Well, bless you. Okay, so all in favor of approving this as first reading? Then we'll move on to E, which is policy twenty-three thirty-seven. This was also, I believe, a model policy without looking at it in front of me. Do I have a, uh, motion to approve the first reading? Is there any questions, comments, ideas? Everybody have a chance to go through it? All right, all in favor of approving the first reading? You say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a chance to go through this?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, principal's M O A.
M O U.
Or it says M O A.
Said M O A? Yeah, my bad.
That's okay.
So we used to say, who was the second? I wasn't paying attention, alright. Okay, all in favor of approving the M O A, please say aye? Inter-local cooperative agreement with West Valley School District, everybody have a chance to go through this?
I would suggest that next time, we're gonna have one item that is a hundred and twenty pages to discuss. That it should be summarized, Mrs. Warner and Mr. Donaldson's style and a brief synopsis of this, I mean, this is. Repetitive, it involves ten schools, there's, we're approving one interlocal. I don't know that we needed to have the minutes. From Ellensburg, Grandview, Los Angeles, Yacklen Moses, reared in Dayton, Lewiston, Quarterly, and Posco included.
It's a lot, isn't it?
Yeah, cause I bet, I could say, did you read what was on page one oh nine? And everybody would say no, and it's a blank page, so I don't know why it's.
I was gonna say, we'd also, yeah, then you'd say what was on it, so I couldn't tell you any.
So that would be, I, I knew that we approved the interlocal agreement with all the schools and going forward. Um, don't include a hundred and twenty pages on one item, summary.
I'll second that.
It would have been four hundred.
She said a nice summary on the first page.
Alright, so we have a first and a second. Do we have questions or concerns?
I do have a, a few questions. I, I like that we're going this direction and my question would be, is this typical for all of our? Is this a typical process for all of our food, um, food service purchases?
Um, we are required to bid out, uh, any food purchases that will be more than ten thousand dollars for the year. So, excuse me, we opted to go with the co-op this year because, uh, it offered a significant savings. In order to bundle with those other school districts, so this is the first time we're entering for the co-op. So, um, we expect to save a lot of money and with the, the cost continuing to rise, we're able to lock in some of that pricing through the co-op.
Are we able to do that for all of our food service need, get into these types of co-ops? I don't think this does everything, it just does milk and produce.
I'm not aware of any other, uh, I know Darlene purchases most of our commodities through U S Foods. So, and then we receive a rebate on that, so. This is an attempt to save a little bit of money.
Buying is a great idea, buying in lo- large groups always saves you, um, some money. Now, I've got some, I got a few other questions. Looking through the hundred and somewhat pages. This isn't my wheelhouse, but, um, there is no current food safety certificate that they provided, will they provide one?
Yeah, you'd reached out to me about that, we will, um, I'm gonna make sure with Darlene that we have.
And I think that's it, that was my big one, thank you.
Anything else? All right, all in favor of approving? Inter-local cooperative agreement with West Valley School District, please say aye? Okay, Renew Counseling Services LLC contract revised.
I don't think it's revised, it was just added, it's one we had, uh, talked about previously. Where, this is a year where we're to, expected to provide training on social emotional learning for our teachers. Um, it is, they do do two days of training, this is technically only one of two days, it's just we're doing it on two. Cause we split our elementary and our secondary up into two groups. Um, Jessica's the one you'd asked, like in the, it was probably winter and we, I brought her evaluations back. And she had like a ninety-six percent approval rating, she brought in, she's bringing in another person to help, just because it's such a large group. So, um, yeah, we're looking forward to training the teachers, or that's like their first official day back.
If memory serves, we also looked into the E S D, I think.
And the E S D doesn't.
Similar, so.
No, they have a few things online that are like two or three hours, but maybe twenty people can register for them. Uh, this kind of training, we have to basically kind of build our own or find our own, so.
Looking down the road, we might think about building our own.
Well, this is, we're having her build our own because we're not experts in that, so, um, yeah, so Jessica is.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Renew Counseling.
I'll second.
Hey, all in favor of Renew Counseling Services?
Got to ask for a question.
Oh, you're right, I did, I apologize. Questions or concerns?
I do have one, is this similar to the online training that was done last summer for the staff?
No, last summer, this, the training we did was in person with Jessica, we didn't do it online.
There wasn't on.
You're talking, you're talking about the racial literacy course, that was, that's it, that, that we're not, that's not this year's topic, that's next year.
Yeah, some of this S C L stuff's pretty deep, but.
They're really gonna focus on building student relate, helping teachers to build relationships with students, so.
Man, I don't know what I did. Oh, well, life's rough. Alright, so we have first, a second, all in favor of Renew Counseling Services contract, please say aye? E W U College in the High School Memor- Memorandum of Understanding, everybody had a chance to go through it? Alright, I would approve a motion, or ask for a motion?
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
At one.
Yes, sir.
Um, in the bottom paragraph at the end, it says, prior to the implementation of the W S I F. Uh, Prosser averaged fifteen percent of students, is that in a dual credit class?
Completing a dual credit course, fifteen percent, they can be in and not earn the credit. Um, so before, so this is, the, the WISF is the way they score schools. Um, but, so five years ago, that's about where we were, fifteen percent of our kids, and this past year was seventy-two point two.
What do you have to do to get the credit?
Um, it depends on which college, but pass the course for actually Eastern. Yes, but they don't recommend that, they recommend at least a C, but a student can take credit with a D if they choose to, most of our students. That is, they don't, they earn a better grade than that, but, um, most of them earning As and Bs. Um, we have a few students, math, that might have a, sometimes, you know, might in that C range, but. Um, they, so actually for Eastern and for Central, they just have to pass the course. For, um, C B C, they have to get a eighty-five percent, so the junior college is a higher standard. Um, they have to have an eighty-five percent earn the credit, but, um, we've, we've really been working on this. And our goal is that every student takes and, and earns still credit. And we would, then we'd like to grow that kids are taking multiples, we have kids walking out with twenty-plus college credits.
So the student knows they're not gonna get a great grade in that class, they can choose to not get the credit and.
Yeah, there's a time during the trimester that they have to decide if they're gonna do it or not. Um, but, so that's, you know. Some of our courses are during the semester, like there's conditioning and it's that one semester or trimester. Some of our courses, like, um, leadership, leadership's the whole year, but they don't earn their credit till the very end. Um, those kids all get, usually do quite well, they don't, we usually have to worry about poor grades and that, but did you have something else, Ryan?
I was just gonna add that, should a student find themselves in that position, they can opt not to take that college credit and still receive high school credit.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it does not get the D on their college transcript, if that's what they were in there.
Could I ask a question? Are most of these credits that they receive, um, when they transfer to the college? You know, that they, let's say like if a kid received a credit at C W U. Do they have an understanding with the other state colleges that they will accept these credits as part of their graduate?
It's just like, it's just like, i- if they went to, like, if they started at Central and transferred to Eastern. It, they get a college transcript and the college accepts the credits on whatever their rules and requirements are. So it's, um, the.
What about private colleges?
It, it, you know, it depends on the school. And for the community colleges, when they went to a uniform system with the course numbers and all of that, that was. Really, you know, very smart to do that, because then moving between community colleges doesn't impact students negatively. Um, but of course, just like transferring, it just like if they've gone to any school, it depends on what the college accepts.
So is it on the student, the student's responsibility then to go to like Eastern, Central, and C B C and get those transcripts to whatever school they're going to?
So it's posted on their high school transcript, but their college transcript, they do have to request from the college, yeah.
We go?
Yeah, I've gone through this process personally, cause I did funding start for a year. So with the C B C, it was relatively easy to get the transcript from C B C to show online.
Everything's online now, yeah.
Yeah, you could just like get the official transcript, but it, and I'm not exactly sure, I think there's a little bit of a process, but, you know, they outline the steps. I think it is on their initiative to do, the students' initiative. And I'm glad that they have a unified system for the community colleges, but my experience transferring some of those credits is that they seem to kind of downgrade.
Yeah.
Not, um, so the courses that were probably roughly, kind of like, had you done, I got, I kind of lowered. Um, class, basically, I taught some very general credits for some classes that really didn't help me at all, unless I needed, um, to fill out the gen, uh, requirement. They didn't match a particular course.
And I think when you're going from a community college to a four-year university, you're gonna, kids are gonna experience that in art, I mean. The best, the best thing is for them to go all the way and get the A A, if they're able to do that, um, but they're, you know. They, the statistics show that a student can walk out of high school with fifteen or more credits under their belt, they're more likely to go to college.
Which is great.
So, so to clarify, the, the packet. Counter sheet says twenty twenty-one showed seventy-two point two, is it actually twenty-one twenty-two?
Actually is twenty, that is, uh, that is an error, it is twenty-one twenty-two, because in twenty twenty-one, we were at like forty-two percent. That is this year's percent, so that, yeah, that should have been correct, but, good job, Jason.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, all in favor of the E W U College in the High School Memorandum of Understanding, please say aye? Alright, so then we, no, wait, 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 wait a second. Alright, so consulting for the co- consulting contract for the finance department was what we moved up to the final action item. What is being proposed at this point was a twenty-three day contract. We did go out to the E S D, they do offer, um. Bookkeeping services, however, they will not come to meetings or help with, uh, any of the other stuff. And it was, uh, slightly less, but of course they don't go to meetings or help with other stuff, so. And this is, what's that?
It's twenty-five.
Oh, it's twenty-five, I thought it was a twenty-three, my bad. Twenty-five day, and that is a maximum, not a minimum.
Or no, this is twenty-three days, Craig is twenty-three days. Oh, E S Ts, those twenty-five thousand for the two projects being proposed.
So there are twenty-five thousand for thirty days, is what the E S D proposed. And that's basic bookkeeping and nothing else, there's no negotiations, no end of the year, I mean, the board meetings and open us through anything. Apparently. Craig's confident that the twenty-three days is adequate to get everything that needs to be done, done, so.
That's a reduction from, originally it was gonna be fifty.
Originally it was gonna be fifty as a maximum. And if they were not needed, they wouldn't have been used.
Okay.
This is a maximum of twenty-three, and again, if he, you know, use fifteen or twenty or twenty-one. It's, it's billed accordingly. And the other part of that is if we asked, uh, E S D to do, well, literally anything except bookkeeping stuff. It was eighty-five bucks an hour. So, it adds up quick anyway, so.
What's the IRS mileage rate for paying mileage from top finish to proster?
I think it's forty.
Fifty-six and a half.
Oh, is it that, I know?
So what is our estimate for that for twenty-three days?
Next question.
Is E S D going to charge us mileage?
Yes.
Yes. What'd you say, fifty-six point three?
Fifty-six and a half. Becky, you should do the math, you should not, but.
Thousand thirty-nine.
Mileage.
It's that far to top?
Forty, about four, we, we just estimated forty miles, so eighty pound trip, yeah.
I guess for estimation sake.
Are we gonna do any other consulting contracts with Linda Ledesma to train the secretaries? Are we gonna have maintenance that supervisor that just resigned, is he going to be consulting too? I mean, is this gonna be something that we're gonna start doing routinely?
Would the board like to consider those? We can definitely go out and negotiate those if the board would like to consider those. I know that we're, right now, the focus is trying to ben, has been trying to balance, present a balanced budget. But yeah, we can hire as many consultants as a district would like. We kind of reduced that, our stance this spring was to hire no consultants. We're in kind of a, a different position with the transition points with our new business manager and our old assistant superintendent, and so finishing up with the budget as well as beginning the enrollment in the end of the year was are heavy and important tasks for the district, but if the board would like to consider that, we can go out and find those, can, you know, basically strike up a deal and see if they're interested in consulting or working with the district to transition those people.
And I know there was a discussion about having Linda come back and train everyone who was gonna be taking, absorbing her duty, so that's another expense. So if we're talking about spending approximately twenty-five thousand dollars and then money for Linda to train, and then for anybody else, I mean, in the goal is to have a balanced budget, but we keep spending to that end. And I think we need to look at what help or support is needed at the district office to, you know, kind of make sure these things aren't happening. You know, like Craig's job wasn't posted till two months after he gave his, you know, intent to retire. And you had someone been hired while he was still there, this wouldn't be a twenty-five thousand dollar expense for incurring. If someone had said, okay, we're not gonna fill this Linda Ledesma, place her position, and Linda, we need you to train for the last six weeks while you're here. That's another expense we wouldn't be occurring, so I don't know what, what is needed, you know, to give support for that and to help whether it's the calendaring system, an organization, or just kind of, you know, flagging it to remember what to do, but I mean, we shouldn't have to spend money that could be going towards student services because something wasn't done timely or thought of.
So I don't, I don't disagree actually, that there's, there are a couple positions that, and then Linda's maybe one of them where we bring her back for a couple days. I think that would be money well spent to help. I, I think the maintenance position has pretty self-explanatory. I mean, you can either manage people, you can, you're either good at maintenance or you're not. This is a little different animal, and, and we did post a little label, we're all in the same boat, all five of us. You know, we were all hip to the same information at the same time, and we chose to, to, to run it and interview people and do things the way we did, so.
I'd like to make a motion, if I can, to approve the consulting contract for up to twenty-three days for Craig Reynolds for the finance department.
I would second that.
Maybe we have a motion second. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it was prudent of us to go out and research other avenues for this with the ESD. It's unfortunate that we're here today. I don't, you know, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Lisa, but we're kind of in a, a bind. You know, I, I probably have the timeline wrong, but I think the budgets actually do middle of next month, if I'm not mistaken.
To have it, we have to have it approved or adopted by the end of August.
By the end of August, okay, so we got a month. So, I'm a little hesitant on the, on the, his, his rate. But, again, I think, I, I just don't know how we get it done without it, so.
Can we negotiate the rate?
I mean, we could, we could, but with that said, his total compensation rolling out was like nine forty, nine thirty. And we're pulling him out of retirement essentially to help us out for a few weeks, so.
Well, it's, it's not a dangerous servitude. He can say no. You didn't have to offer.
No, no.
Right. I mean, we could, why don't we propose the ESD rate at eighty-five dollars an hour?
With the motion on the table, I'd like to see it through.
Well, we do actually. All in favor of approving the contract? Finance Department?
Aye. Local.
Is this one?
No.
That's not a.
Four and one.
I just feel like Craig will be worth every dime of it, because there's things that ESD is not gonna be able to handle that he has done for years, and we'll make sure that if all the bases are covered, we need his expertise. And when we might have been getting his job description ran sooner, we were in the depth of working on levy. That turned into a lot of work.
Okay, well, with that one, that concludes the action items. We're now onto discussion items. A, on discussion items, a comprehensive school counseling program.
So we talked about this at a study session recently. We are, there's some new laws on the books for counseling, a new comprehensive school counseling plan. This is a transition plan we talked about previously. I found one typo in it. So this is just the beginning step, and it talks kind of overall about the changes that are coming, coming to counseling with some of the expectations around how counselors spend their time and then how they track their time. So if there's any questions or comments, we, if we could you know, resolve those, right, because we do have to approve it, so it needs to come to the board for approval, preferably at the next meeting. And then they're gonna be working on their, we'll be working on the district and individual building their actual comprehensive, comprehensive school counseling plan. This is just the transition into that new model.
Is there any questions for Deanna? Comments, anything? Alright, I think you got your answer.
Thank you.
Deanna, where, where can we find a copy of that?
It's, it's, it's in the board packet.
Okay.
Yep, if you stop by my office, we can make you one too.
Okay.
It's, and it's just the transition plan. It's not the whole comprehensive school counseling plan. We're still working on that.
And just the state published that.
The template, yeah, is published with a state. But each, each, each district and building creates their own.
I can give you mine out of my packet right now.
Yeah, actually, you could have mine too.
You know what she's got? When I was gonna say it's Selena with Brent one.
I have one in here somewhere too, and I have all kinds of them, so.
I double sided, so you're gonna have part of something else.
Alright, so, let's move on. Next on the list would be C, and that's the Patterson proposal.
Yeah, so Joe West is their new superintendent. He took over July one. I've spoken with him three times on the phone. Two of those have been pretty in-depth conversations about our proposal. So they're still considering the two options that we had proposed. We proposed a one-time payment of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a kind of payment plan of five hundred thousand dollars. So he's working with his board on that. So they had some, initially, they had some kind of contingency agreements that they wanted us to consider. We are working on trying to put something on paper. But there's still, one of the things he had said that Patterson would like to see us, as soon as pay, if they do a one-time lump sum, they would like to see us take action on our Fiker, on a project that we're gonna use it on this campus. So that has, I guess, presented some unique considerations for us. This week, I've, I've spoken with at least one of you about just the fact that, yeah, Art Fiker needs some loving. The, the shrubs are, are dead. We've heard before at the board meetings that it's not ADA accessible. We've heard before at the board meetings that the track gives students shin splints. So we do need to consider that as maybe one of our next large-scale projects, even though we're, we still have all the construction going on with the elementaries. I do think that we need to come up with a plan about addressing it probably sooner, rather than later. I know that Jason, you talked about really sitting down, maybe in a, our own work session or retreat and coming up with the facilities plan and really breaking down what projects we wanna do.
I think that's paramount, that we do that.
Would it be possible or wise to put that question out before the public and see if you've got a couple of unusual but qualified and good ideas?
About the facilities.
And useful funds.
Yeah, there, so there is, I think, funding is a big, one of the big discussions that has to happen first. Of course, if we don't have money, then that project's not gonna happen. And so looking at ways that we can either phase it, or as you'd propose, that property on Misper, if we sell, liquidate any of the properties we have, those have to actually go into capital projects. They can't pay for wages. So determining what properties actually we wanna sell, and then how we'll use that money. We're limited on, school districts are, they can't go out and buy lottery tickets or invest it in the stock market. So, so even though that money will grow, there are limitations on how it can grow. So, and Patterson is a partner wanting to honor them. So they actually wanna see action so they can say to their community, look, we made a contribution and our money's, you know, taking effect here. So, yeah, I think there are a lot of different conversations that have to happen with stakeholders and, and partners like Patterson School District.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, next would be the budget.
Yeah, so Becky has been working on this quite a bit. We still, we still need to consider if we're still looking at a balanced budget. Staffing is one of those considerations that we need to talk about. So the closer we get to a balance, well, the closer we get to a balanced budget, the more staff that we have to consider reducing, of course, but so Becky, do you have anything to add?
Well, I, as we're working, trying to get to a balanced budget, I, I just wanted to mention a couple of things about that. I went through and, Sean, can I, or Danny, can I share my screen? I went through and I just took a couple of districts in the area and compared their budgets and how, how they presented their budgets in the past, and I'm having trouble zooming. So hopefully I can zoom on this. I'm not sharing. Sorry, I'll try to make this as large as I can. So I took a couple of other school districts in the area, Clarkston and Freida, who have similar enrollments as ours. And just starting from the bottom, from twenty eighteen, nineteen, and moving our way up to current, you can see that all, all of the districts typically will run their budgets out of deficit, but then at the end of the year, it will, usually, it will not be, you know, it will make up the difference, or there won't be quite as much of a deficit as was planned. And you can see for twenty twenty-one, when we all started receiving ESER, that all of those budget deficits were actually surplus amounts, and so I wanted to stress that there's nothing wrong with running a budget at a deficit. We, I understand the board wants to run the budget as a balanced budget, and I think we can do that. Running the budget at a deficit allows capacity. It's easy to take away, but it's really hard to add back if you don't have that capacity. So, and I also talked to Travis Belial down at the ESD, one twenty-three in Pasco, and he gave me some really good ideas about, about the budget and why we should run it at a deficit, and one of those things being, you know, the, just the economy and where we are, the state of the economy today. It's, you know, the, the implicit, the IPD implicit price deflator, the state gave us five and a half percent, but our consumer price index currently is nine point eight percent. So, you know, we, and in addition to that, the state hasn't adjusted the funding model for transportation, so as we have fuel costs rising and other costs, there is no, there's no funding from the state to make, make up for that. So, that's kind of all I really have, had to say about it.
I would add one thing. So like today, I, I applied, I was, worked on one competitive grant today and for the high school, and then I worked, I finished one and worked, worked on another one. And those would not be included, like, they wouldn't be in the budget, so any of the, those, any grants that we seek, we do have to have some capacity built in, which looks like a negative balance, you know, that will have a negative any balance, because if we don't, we don't have that, we will have to come back and do
Yeah, we have to extend.
Extend the budget anytime that happens.
You're talking like a couple hundred thousand, not two million.
Well, you never know, but right, right now, like, what I, what I was applying for today is like fifty, sixty thousand. It's not a lot, but you, if you, if you are directly dollar for dollar, you have no capacity. So that's another issue that we just have to be mindful of.
Well, we've got, what, like five weeks to get it put together, so. Definitely one of the things we'll be discussing.
Thank you very much.
And we move the boys and girls club lease down to the bottom.
Yeah, so one question. I think I'll try to wing it. So I I got, you know, we got all this stuff in our board packet. It looks like you keep our budget increases about five million a year. Is that that accurate? From this year to last year is about five million. Or twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two is about five million. It looks like we're projected to be.
Yeah, that, that five million wasn't, it's due to ESER, this, this jump in revenue that we've experienced. Are you talking about the the surplus from twenty twenty-one, or are you just talking about the five million deficit that we?
I'm just talking about our expenditures. Revenue and expenditures.
It's, and.
Could you turn it up on screen so we can see it too?
Yeah, apologies. I already quit sharing my screen.
I can't even see that.
Sorry.
Becky, was this one in the board packet?
This was not. I, I made this just before I came in today.
It's very useful.
I was gonna ask for a copy.
You're better off the other way. Go back to what, just escape it, and go back. That's easier.
Okay.
No, that is bigger.
How about that? Okay. So you're saying that from?
So from twenty to twenty-one, from twenty twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two, we went up about five million in expenditure.
Excuse me for just a second. I don't think what you have on the screen is what, is what the audience is wanting to see.
It, well, it's roughly the same. Because you still got Proser, we got our, but last year's our pre-twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty-three budget.
We're talking, we're looking at right here?
Next, there you go.
Okay.
Those two.
Okay, so the thirty-eight million right here, and then the forty, forty million right here?
Yep, and then it goes up to forty-seven.
To forty, forty-six. We've got ESER two in there, we've got ESER three.
And, what are those dollars, you know? You know, I'll tuck your head. If you don't have that.
But those are one-time infusions.
Yeah.
Yeah, ESER three is three point nine million, and ESER two is seven hundred eleven thousand. We also did receive. We also did receive some spent ARP dollars and that's about a hundred and three thousand. There's some carryover too, from lap and title one.
So if I was, so my, yes, my question that I was getting at, we're going up five million over the last two years, so. From twenty twenty-one to basically this next year, we are budget increased roughly ten million. Eight million and change, something like that. Could I, could we safely assume that after this, these Esther dollars are gone? Our budget will return back to somewhere in the forty. Probably somewhere down between thirty-nine and forty-one.
Possibly, yeah, with inflation. I mean, nineteen twenty is probably our last typical year before we went into COVID. So, yeah, I would. Have a little inflation onto that thirty-seven, yeah, forty, forty-one.
Not to mention, they were talking about doing away with the built money too.
Yeah, we have to fight for that every year.
Yeah, that's not a ton, but it was. Three quarters of a million or something.
Well, it allows us to pay out that like, you know, when we bought the fleet, the white fleet of vehicles. I believe we're still paying on that, aren't we? Just put dollars to pay for it.
Do we want to devote? But we're gonna have to devote. Workshop study session meeting, something to get this finalized in the next few weeks.
Yeah.
Whether, whether we. Whether we dip in and then quit making cuts or continue to make, I mean, it's a decision that's.
Yeah.
We'll have to make and it has to be sooner rather than later, so.
I can start working with Craig and, and of course Becky's just been. Awesome. She's just been a workhorse.
She's got a cooler computer than Craig.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So. Yeah, she's been outstanding and so, yeah, we, we will work on. Kind of developing some different projections, some forecasts and then. Just look at where we are. If you want us to provide some recommendations or if you want us to shoot for a target number, we can definitely do that as well.
Do we want to?
Well, I know our, you know, our preliminary budget right now is three hundred and eighty over, right? You know, and that, and I know we've talked about other adjustments and cuts. You know, so even if we just stopped what we're doing now, we're still four hundred over, which is a heck of a lot better than one point six.
Right.
I know in our financials, I think we're sitting at one point three today.
Right.
Uh, so we'll see how next month jives, but. Yeah, I think we should have a good work session on it.
So today is the twenty-seven. We actually should actually have a meeting on the tenth. What about the fourth?
When will our budget meeting be? Cause that has to be fourteen days notice in the paper, right?
In the paper, so it would.
Well, if we can meet on the third, it has to be adopted by when? The end of August. The end of August. So that leaves three and a half weeks. If we can meet on the third and actually agree on everything. That gives plenty of time for us to advertise the meeting, get it advertised for say the twenty-fourth and adopt it the following week.
We'd have. Craig is, if, if you're gonna have Craig. Review the update.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, can we, can we touch base with, with Craig first and. And not, not that the third's a bad day, but just to get him on board and then. If the third works for him, then we can go with that. And then if not, we can look at a different date, next week or early the week after. Is that acceptable? For the port?
I'm, I'm guessing this is gonna be a long one. Last time we went through an item and at a time and took.
Yeah.
Like hours.
This is, this is the most important work that boards do.
Right.
So this drives everything else within the district.
So if we're looking at one, say on the third. Would you guys want to start early, early like three, four?
No, I, I work a job, like a regular.
I don't work at five o'clock. I start at the crack of dawn. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be here for a while, so earlier we can get started, the better. Whatever works for everybody.
We could do five or six.
I could do five.
I can do five.
I can do five.
Touch base and, and if it works out.
Five o'clock start.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if it works for these guys, cause I remember last time we went through item at a time, we were here for like four and a half hours. And less it's cooler on that night than it is tonight. So.
You'll let us know.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Yep, I'll reach out to Craig tomorrow or even tonight, maybe depending on when we get, when we conclude.
Okay, was there anything else on the budget? Okay, then we moved, see the Boys and Girls Club lease from action down to the bottom of discussion. And Matt wanted to show us.
Yeah, so just a brief update. We had sent the initial contract over to our legal counsel. He expressed just some concerns and how it was constructed. And so what we tried to do was create an MOU. That said, we, we are partners with the Boys and Girls Club. We intend to negotiate and find an agreement. For the use of that property in that facility. While we're working on, you know, more spelled out, more thorough contract. So that's what we're doing. Brian, anything to add that you'd like to add to that?
I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing.
Thank you for driving down.
So I do, the indications are we probably will not get the grant, but. That's okay, cause we'll be all, we'll get in two years. And the state does weird stuff like fund grants for projects that's actually completed. I don't know.
Anybody have anything else to add? Any questions? Alright. So that concludes the discussion items and we jump into reports. You gonna hit this one, Becky? Sure you knocked that part.
So. At the reports for June twenty twenty-two, we're eighty-three percent through the year. And as Jason was mentioning earlier, looking at our excess of revenues. Showing a negative on one point three. However, in July, we received twelve and a half percent of our total portionment for the year. One point or four point one six million. So I'm hoping that's gonna correct some of that deficit. For next month. So I'm hoping the reports for next month will, will look a lot better than they do currently. Also, I, as you guys had mentioned, we, we need to look at adopting the budget and need to advertise for two weeks. We're on track with that. I'll also report on food service and transportation since they're out here today. Darlene got an additional grant from United Way for twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And that's to help us implement the breakfast after the bell program that starts at the beginning of the year. Lot of moving pieces with that. So this money's gonna help out a lot for that. And then for transportation, Amy this week, she's attending the driver instruction training. And she's also working on an electric vehicle grant. And this would be for one electric bus with a charging station. She's also working on a clean. Diesel grant and this one would be a thirty thousand dollar replacement reimbursement. Should be for up to three buses and I think that's where you salvage the, the motors or whatever, like what, okay. And then she also notes here, looking at housing and making game plans to adjust routes for students who have moved. And Cindy, she's also training two new drivers. And mechanics are working on repairs to the engines and transmissions and they are attending the state mechanic conference.
We'll move on to Assistant Superintendent Flores.
I have a question, I have a question regarding transportation and I don't, I don't know if anyone does answer. I know we had an issue in the spring with theft of fuel and damage to vehicles at Transportation Department. There's been a recent uptick in that neighborhood as well. Have we had any issues with district vehicles?
We actually.
Did we change?
Amy bought some cameras as well, so we can have cameras and. Yeah, so that those would feed in and we would have a recording of that. And so we talked to Brian about, Brian Aberg about the same thing. So not just having cameras at our schools, but having cameras on all district property in cases vandalized. So no, but she hasn't reported any more of those. Neither had he. He had really worked on trying to arrange his vehicles and put them under lights and in safe places.
So then just real quick, the two drivers are training, that's to replace the two we've lost, or will we have any subs?
I, I'm sure that we'll have subs. They're hard to find. Bus drivers, period, are defined. So, yeah, I'm sure we'll have some subs as well.
I understood she had two that weren't coming back.
That's what you need to do, Janie. Find your CDL.
I, I don't want to.
One is a custodian, actually. He works as a custodian for us and he's learning to drive us. Okay, are you really ready for me now?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. A couple of weeks ago, I, I got a call from Rob Rogers. And he works with the Benton County Clean Air Authority. And he contacted me because he couldn't get hold of Craig. And they, they work with state agencies to install wildfire smoke sensors. They actually detect more than wildfire smoke. They, any, any particulate matter, so it could be dust or anything. And there is no sense, the closest sensors are Kennewick and Sunnyside. So there's none in this corridor. So we would have the first one here. It's either gonna probably be on the top of Riverview or Housel. They came and scoped it out today and they will. Work with the Department of Ecology to determine where it's gonna get located. So that'll be really good for us. And there's, there's just a website you can go on and you can look at. On the website and see any of them, but like he showed me, there's no camera, there's no sensor between here and the Tri-Cities, all the way to Sunnyside. So that'll be good for us. We have a lot of kids that have breathing issues, asthma, those kinds of issues. So having one that's close because. We get fires, you know, on the hill or sometimes, you know, we get very socked in with certain things here that you could drive five miles and there's nothing. So. So we're excited about that. They were, they were really nice, very happy to, excited that they're gonna get to do that here. My other things are about construction. I'll talk about all three elementary schools. I, Jeannie and I walked. KRV and Heights today. I've been walking regularly just because we are in such a tight crunch time. We are starting to, we are moving Riverview. On Monday, the first, and they should all be moved by the end of the week. And same time, we'll be moving with strand into classrooms. And then on the eighth, we begin the move, actually not the eighth, we post, had to postpone to the, to the fifteenth. To move Heights. Heights is definitely the school that is the furthest behind. But when I went into classrooms today, they look like classrooms. There was actually carpet in some of the classrooms, which has not been the case, and they'll have all the carpet done next week. So, and there's flooring and paint, there's still windows, like operable windows are missing and those will probably be missing when school starts because. They can't get them. And there'll be a few things like that, that will probably continue. There'll be an issue or they, like the integral blinds in the doors won't be here yet. So it might just be a piece of Plexiglas. You probably won't notice a difference, but down the road it will, might look different. It's, it's been a push and it's, it, it's a lot of Tuesday morning intense meetings, I'll just say. With, I attend all the construction meetings and Dan is Dan Pierrefoy, who's been here. And is our person on site that works for ESD. He's had his work cut out for him on these two projects. So that being said, we now will talk about Wood Strand. Good news and bad news. Wood Strand, you know, there's cruising along. They were digging, preparing to put in the new wing out the back. And they found two giant abandoned fuel tanks. Big.
I knew they were there.
Big, full of concrete. So, but, so they removed them as thirty-three thousand dollars. We could have left them. But then if we have any settling or issues of the foundation, so that we're removing them. But they have not had to spend, they have twenty-five thousand dollars in unsuitable soils and rock removal, and that has not been an issue out there at all. So there's gonna, that'll offset, it'll be about eight thousand dollars out of the contingency, but other than that, they, they have torn everything up, up out there. And they're feeling quite good about, it's not been the surprises we've experienced at Carrefy. Carrefy had a lot of surprises. So, so, yeah, well, if you knew where they're, evidently nobody else did.
Oh, we saw, I remember us talking about them.
Well, it was, it was evidently news to the people with a backhoe. So.
The ones did.
Well, yes, and they were literally right where they're putting the new wing. So it was worth the money to take them out and make sure we don't have issues down the road.
Know they were full of cement, though.
They were full of cement. Yeah, they filled them. And they probably would have been there for as long as the school's been there, so. And then they got decommissioned somewhere along the, along the line. So now, yeah, if David, maybe if Dave was here, he probably would have been able to speak to that.
Couldn't even tell you how many years ago it was that we discussed it, but it's been multiple years at this point.
Yeah, it's exciting though. Wood Strand is scheduled to be done in July of next year. So I will say, I'm, I'm not really sure if, you know, the principals are having this discussion about back to school nights. And what those potentially could or could not look like for those two buildings. I don't think it's gonna be an issue for Riverview. It might be a little bit of an issue for Heights, but. I've already talked to Jody today because, you know, we won't have Mr. Aberg to manage the move. Jody is on it and she is going to make sure that everything gets where it's supposed to be. Furniture for review shows up Monday. They'll be putting that to, you know, be installing that. They'll be working out of the NPR. Furniture shows up for Heights next Monday. And it's, it's gonna be tight, but we're gonna be in there. So there will still be that. Sector four, which is about four classrooms, five classrooms in the library that will not be finished. At Heights, but where everyone's fitting in without it. So making it happen, everyone's moving.
What about the playground?
The playground, so they haven't really been doing a lot of site work and that is all, it, like, I told them, like, if you guys put the. Parking lot in, people will think that you're getting work done today. Work done. Today, they were out there like little busy bees, so they're working on the site right now. So they are, will be working, they're working on that as well. So the plan would be have all that needs to be in a safe. You know, safe for kids when school starts and we need a place for kids to go to play. That's an issue at Riverview too. But there's gonna be a place to play. They may not have play equipment if we can't access those parts, but they will. Dan told me today, it's sector four, that portion of Heights that won't be done. He thinks about four weeks, I think October. So we'll see. That being said, actually, I'll throw one more thing out there. We, we do have some spaces, so we've never explored the idea of transitional kindergarten. I've talked about it before, but it's been quite a while. Transitional kindergarten is a grant that we can apply for and it's kind of like. Pre-kinder. So there are students out there that aren't in preschool. Or there are some preschools, like for instance, Ecap, if a student is five and a parent has decided not to put their student in school yet. They cannot be in Ecap, or they could be a private preschool, but Ecap will not, does not take five-year-olds. So it's, it's like a half a year of kinder, starts usually in January. There's a grant that pays for it. You hire a teacher. You have to have space. Well, we haven't had any space. Well, we will have some space. So we could actually, so I could write that grant and we could. Start a couple of transitional kinder classes and it, it's to really help those kids with that jumpstart to get ready for kindergarten. And then they start kindergarten and it's, it, it, it enrollment counts like. I mean, it's norm, once it starts, but it is about half the year. So that's something that I'm gonna work on in all my spare time. But I think it's time for us, now that these construction projects are gonna be finished, we're gonna have a place and we didn't have that before, so.
How many empty space? Go ahead.
How many available classrooms will it be at KRV and at Heights?
You know, when you have classrooms, people tend to spread out. So I think that there's at least a couple at Riverview that we could access. And I know at the Heights because we won't be using that wing and I don't anticipate her moving teachers, other than maybe if she has a couple specialists sharing. Um, we won't be using that wing and I don't anticipate her moving teachers, other than maybe if she has a couple specialists sharing, dividing them back up. I, I, we would have at least a few spaces there too, we probably wouldn't start with that many transitional case, but maybe, maybe two, maybe start there. And see what our interest would be, um, the state pays for it, so, um, and it would help our kids, so.
If you wonder.
How much space do we still have at the old high school?
Um, we actually have quite a bit of state, of space at the high school because, well, none right now, but once everything's moved. Um, we aren't using the, the CTE wa- building is not being used except for where Special Ed is currently has their office. Um, and really what um Witstran's almost filling, plus the three preschool, four preschools we have there, they're filling the main. The old, original building and then um, there might be a room or two upstairs that are available, but I'm not sure. And so there won't be anybody, oh yeah, that'll be kindergarten, first, second grade, it'll all be in the science wing. Um, cause they all need, they keep them on the first floor.
Yeah.
Um, so there'll be the, the portables, the very nice portables between. The CTE building and the gym, um, will not have anything in them and the CTE building won't have any, won't have any classes. Uh, we still have, eh, we still have our development preschool in the white church and we're not moving them, they're settled in for right now, so that'll, they'll stay there. And then that, we're adding an Ecaps, we'll have three, we'll have four total preschools, classes here next year. And they will be, they're in, in the main building with, with Kevin's kit, so it's gonna be a full house in the, in the original building, the old building.
Be like herding cats.
That's what we do.
Yeah, herding cats, yes.
Anyway, that's, that's all for me today.
Thank you, Deanna.
Mr. Ellis, what's he?
Um, I was just gonna talk a little bit about, of course, we're transitioning Amy Hill. Um, I contacted her today and then, of course, tonight you approved the resignation of Brian Aberg. Um, he's moving on to a job that's more lucrative. So that presents some unique issues, Deanna talked about construction moving, um, opening a school, opening football. Um, for grounds of maintenance. With Amy, I mean, this is both of them, Brian and Amy, some of the security projects that we had going from tinting the windows to buying more radios. Um, so we need to get that going uh before the opening of the school year. Um, so that's, we'll need to fill those positions, for Brian's position, if you're interested in sitting in on the interviews. Um, we'll post and I know that Jeannie and Peggy, you were um part of the interview committee last time, but if you're interested. Uh, let me know and we can do that. Wasda, I've reached out to Wasda about strategic planning. Um, we're still working on an outline, what that will look like, uh, hopefully they can uh work with us in sometime in August. And then um, kinda as the, the final note, um, my final note tonight. Uh, we're just entering into negotiation, so we still have a lot of negotiations, we kinda have to wrap up. Um, the PEA CBA has some openers. Um, as well as we still need to resolve the, the athletic coaches and unrepresented um employees within our district. So, um, I'd love to get the board's uh point of view and perspective. And so probably be reaching out to you within, you know, the next week or so, um, to know kinda where, what you think about um. Where we sit on that, so that's all I have.
Good, board reports. Lisa, you wanna start?
Sure. What is our first day of school?
Thirty.
The thirtieth, so we're thirty, thirty-three days out from the first day of school, is that about right? And then are, do you feel like we're ready to go, have a safety thing, for teachers been scheduled, handbooks? Um, I don't know if that has been organized. And then do we, do the, does each building principal send a letter to students, like a welcoming letter, is that something the district does, the school supply, and when does that usually go out?
Uh, the school supply information went out before school was out. Um, and the, each of the buildings, they send out information to parents, send out a parent, a letter to parents with information about everything from. Might be a reminder, school supplies, but things about school starting, about. Um, if they're, you know, their back to school night plans, those kinds of things, when class lists will be posted. Um, and then um, the, as far as the district, there's letters that I send out as far as like Title One. Some of the, you know, Title One and services and things like that that are required, um, or the, you know, to inform parents. But yeah, all of that, and most of the principals are, some of them have been, you know, they were kind of off and on all summer, but most of them are back. Well, Brian was here today, but uh the second week of August is when you'll, pretty much they seem regularly to be here. So most of that comes out, cause they need their secretaries and their secretaries help put that out. Most of the principals write it before they leave school, the, so it's ready and then the secretaries just run it and put it out like two weeks before school starts.
I read a letter, um, a welcome letter to parents from a different school district, it was just, it was just so thoughtful, I think I heard to other parents that received this letter. And it was just like such a welcoming letter, like, okay, we're ready for school, our kids are excited, and I know the school supply list goes out, but it was like. Here's, you know, just for you, and I think it was something, you know, the parents got a letter and the kids got their school supply list and it was just, it was just such a nice gesture. And such a nice way to like start the school year and I wanted to make sure that was something that we were doing too. Uh, one thing, I did reach out to Matt and I see some other board members on it, um, I'm very concerned that by Sunday, we're gonna have. No grass at the stadium, if the irrigation isn't adjusted, and it's, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, it's, it's bad and the weeds are as tall as I am. I mean, and I'm not that tall, but you know, along, along the slope and I, I know that we're talking about spending money in improvements, but we can do some. Non-expensive things like adjust the irrigation, run, run the irrigation second time a day. I, um, I know when I lived across the street, it went a couple times, three times a day when it was this hot. I, I don't think it's doing that now and if it is, it's shooting off the wrong direction and the, I mean, please pull the weeds, that is something that we could do that's not gonna cost. A hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, but that's our, our entrance to our, to our school district, the community uses it, the balloon rally is gonna be there for Night Glow in September. And it, it looks like um someone in the house has been in a, like a murder-suicide and no one has taken care of the yard. And or for, I mean, it looks, it looks rough and we need, we have more pride than that, we wanna put a good foot out for the community, so anything that could be done. Like, tonight.
I, I, I spoke to Brian um and Terry um about the stadium. They uh, what keeps happening there is blowouts because the old system can't handle the pressure of the new pump. And then also about here, down below here, so Brian told me that there are solenoids that are out in the irrigation system that they're waiting for. That was, he told me that two days ago. But yeah, I do the same, I drive around and I'm like, okay, this doesn't look alive, Riverview looks like a leopard. Um, with spots and we don't have control over Riverview's irrigation right now, it's still in the hands of construction, but yeah. That's grass not coming back, you're gonna have to replant it, so, but the, I, I, I agree, but I know they are struggling with irrigation.
Is there a plan, um, for the playfield that Riverview was cut, you know, divided with the fence? For a baseball field, is there a plan to, with that, after constructions over to use it as a playground or? I know that, that happens.
The baseball field will, will be a baseball field again, um, but they may have to use it until they finish all the site work on the playground side. So, that um has a lot of weeds in it right now, but it is at least green, so, yeah. Um, yeah, these are things that I, that keep me up at night as well, um, so. Yeah, I know that there's, they're having a lot of challenges and it makes even, and then you have a challenge right now when it's a hundred and six degrees, it's very difficult, but. Um, we, I tried to call Brian today, I didn't get ahold of him, but we can call him again.
So, just a follow-up question, if Keen Riverview is still under control of construction. Would that be their responsibility to put it back to the way they found it, cause it wasn't then when they started?
It wasn't, that was probably the best grass we had in the whole district when they sawed it that over there, yeah, they have to fix it, we actually just had this discussion. Construction meeting yesterday morning, um, and Dan, he goes after all those things, so they have to make it right, they have to fix it, um.
Same with Heights as well, cause that was.
It, yeah, anything that is under their control, although there was an issue with irrigation at Heights, the part that's beyond the fence in the playground was our responsibility. And there was uh, they tore it a riser or something, which was, was construction and they had to replace it, but that's coming back, cause they've. The irrigation's back on there, but I think that they're having a constant battle with irrigation.
It's gonna hit right about the time when kids are in. So, i- in fact, that'll be, it'll be brand-new grass and so when you walk, you know, walk on brand-new grass, it gets trampled and dies. And so, that'll hit right as kids get back in school, so it's one of those um wicked problems that, you know. Doesn't necessarily have a solution, on top of that, the, they're planning on doing the state state parade. And so, in the past, sometimes they've used Riverview as a staging area, so. Um, they've requested to use that and we don't even know if there's gonna be grass there, we don't know, if it's too young, of course, it'll kill it.
Yeah, they can.
Um, but also wanting to be good partners and help out and, and celebrate opening up again, right? We're all able to be around each other, let's come out and, and be a community and so, that's kinda um tough as well. So, we're in limbo.
Jump over to the parking lot, the gravel park and lot there by the swimming pool or something.
Yeah, we can.
That's, that's covered in construction.
It is, there's, there's a lot of, I mean, there's the streets, there, I mean, we, we can make it work, they really probably aren't gonna be able to part, be on the. Ground.
Whatever did it the last team, well, no, didn't have a great question.
We'll figure it out, we're gonna have ten thousand swim parents there this weekend, so it'll all be good.
It'll all be good.
All be good.
All right, Jeannie?
Um, I just had a couple of quick things, I got to set in on the interviews for the athletic director. Um, enjoyed that and I think we just the best choice. Um, and I enjoyed the tour with Deanna today, it's a little. I, I told her I just felt a little bit panicky, but I realized they can get so much done so quickly. Because they have so many people working on it, and then a comment about when school starts, I remember that. The newspaper also publishes the supply list, is that correct?
They have in the past.
Yeah, and, and so.
And also bus routes and back to school nights and open houses as well.
All righty, that's it.
I don't really have anything this week.
All righty, Jason?
Uh, I, a couple of things, I'm gonna kinda tag onto your comments, uh, you know, when we finished the high school. We had, uh, I don't know, this hillside out here that was supposed to be this natural vegetation that was basically just. And that cost us sixteen thousand dollars to fix, if I'm not mistaken. How can we ensure that when we're done with Cape uh Riverview and Heights, that we're not gonna fall into the same traffic, do we have? Like, what's our plan for?
So that everything is, is punched, um, whether it's inside or outside, so there's, there's punched. Uh, you go through and, you know, check for any issues, marks in the paint, carpet, the piece of carpet is bubbling, same thing outside. So, that, what happened here was that, that was designed that way, so then once it's done, it's actually done the way it was designed. Whereas having dead grass is not in the design.
Okay, not one of our better decisions.
I, yeah. Well, it sounded like they're actually planning something that natively grows here, but that was not the case.
Was, it was uh.
We, mustard. Cheek grass.
Cheek grass, natural.
And then my only other thing was, keeps, I don't know why I thought of it today, but um, I do think we, we have to adjust our district boundaries, is that not correct?
We do, yeah.
And what's our timeline to get that done, so we're in compliance?
Yeah, we need to um, post it, it's, it's the same process as a budget hearing, so perhaps we can run those in tandem. Um, but we need to announce it two weeks in advance and then there has to be um. Like a, a hearing at a meeting, um, in order to do that and you adopt it by resolution.
Is there a timeline that it has to be completed?
We have it, we have it developed, um, I know that the state adjusted those, I don't know the exact date that it has to be. But yeah, we, we do need to, that is like one of our top priorities on this, that we have to, we have to get that um accomplished and done. We have it all drafted up, um, the boundary adjustments, and so we've done a lot of the front loading. Um, that was a project that I delegated to Craig and um, as he transitioned out, it got lost in the mix and. After he got out, like, where were we at with that and, you know, finding out, we need to go back and, you know. Like, that's something on the list to do before, before summer ends, so.
All right, so. And I can't talk, last meeting's baby granddaughter. So I am going to jump on with what Elisa said, of two of the things. Uh, the hill, the hill over here at the stadium, shoot, I agree, looks like crap. Could we look at what it would cost to just grovel it and rock it like we did with the mess out here?
Yeah.
I mean, now that way it's a one, yeah, it's one time, it's done, and.
Yeah.
And I hate, well, I say I hate it, but.
Well, you can um, but at least, put sterilin on it, so no weeds grow and then at least it's something to look at instead of dead, dead weeds and shrubs.
Shrubs and skunks, yeah. And then uh, the other thing um was handbooks, at our safety meetings, uh, it had been brought up that all of the schools, we're gonna go back. All of the buildings, we're gonna go back to, to actual handbooks.
Yeah.
Have we made any strides towards that at all, Brian, or have you?
Yeah, so uh, the discussion has been about handbooks is splitting it, so going over the handbooks with every single student that is gonna come back. That's, I think that's something that has never actually happened. But the planners will be planners without the handbook portion, the handbook portion will be separate from the handbook. From like the calendar that they carry in their depth.
Okay.
They will be, we will cope with those.
And it's currently all available online, correct, for, for all buildings? So worst-case scenarios, we could, you know, fold a copy off some and give it to them when they sign up.
If they need that, if they need a paper copy, we can definitely do that, uh, we have, you know, maybe mustang periods where we will, we will have the option.
Cause I know that was something else our, our parent group had asked about. A couple of months ago at this point, I had totally forgotten until she said something, so.
So just, we're talking about two different things, and the student handbook, which has all the policies, et cetera, and then the. Uh, the, the safety handbook is like that red and white thing with the.
There are, there are two different things, so the safety handbook is not a student handbook, um, that is first down.
Right, the one that's like.
Emergency procedure plan.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then we're talking about agendas versus a student handbook, and those will be secondary.
Okay.
Well, you're also up, we are updating the discipline policy anyway, so putting in the old one would be.
That's part.
Kind of a moot point.
Major part why we decided.
Okay, fair enough. Well, and that's all I had, so. That leaves us with future meetings, uh, August tenth, right here.
Third, possibly the third.
Yeah, well, we'll decide that when we decide. Uh, and then on the seventeenth, we have a study session, which will start at seven, I believe Jason and I will probably have our safety meeting, are you gonna? Yeah, wait a little while longer to bring it back, but we'll, we'll start it in August.
Okay, that's fine.
Which uh, will precede the, the work, the workroom meeting and then on the twenty-fourth would be our next regular meeting following that. At six o'clock right here, we are gonna go into executive session. Uh, we're gonna need about an hour, it will be RCW forty-two point three. One, one, zero, one G to review performance of a public employee, no action to follow. And then the next part would be item G, I guess, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. Or to review the performance of a public employee, subject to RCW forty-two point three zero one one four zero. Dash four. Well, this is painful. Discussion by governing body of salaries, wages, other conditions of employment to be generally applied to the agency of premiering. Occurring in a meeting open to the public, when governing body elects to take final action on hiring, setting salaries of an individual employee or class. It's not even done yet. Uh, employees are discharging discipline of an employee, that action shall be taken in a meeting open to the public and not tonight. So the regular meeting is adjourned, we will. For recess, excuse me, uh, we will take five minutes and then we will come back in executive session for probably an hour.